I'm delighted to welcome you to a joint House of Incentive Energy Sources of Energy hearing on energy siting with a focus on solar. Your participation is welcome and essential, and it's great to see such a great turnout. If you haven't done this before, so let me just review the rules of the road and logistics for tonight. It's a bit like town meeting for speakers, you know, be polite, address the panel, we're not debating with each other or anything. For the audience, please, you know, no outbursts, clapping, or anything else. It helps us keep on moving, and in terms of keeping on moving, each speaker will get two minutes, and then we have a timer here, we'll tell you your time is up. Please submit written testimony if you have longer remarks, or even if you have just your two minutes of remarks. We will be posting all the comments on the committee website, so in order to share the thinking more broadly around the state. We're taking testimony for two hours, and we'll stop on time. Given that we have 120 minutes, and we're sure that everyone is treated fairly in this process, we are doing a -- people who have signed up, we've taken 60 names, two hours' worth of names, and we're doing a random draw. So Representative Ellis will read off who's up next, and then the two people after that, so that you can get yourself steered to come up in the front, or excited, or whatever it is. Out of respect for everyone else who's coming, who's here, given the limited time, please stick with the two-minute limit, we'll be giving you a signal. Again, written testimony to Committee Assistant Katie Pickens will be great, because it will help us post what we have, so that we can share on the website. And if you know people who could make it here tonight, and they're still interested, we'll be accepting comments beyond this evening. The other one last note is, you know, sometimes when we have such hearings, we're here to order talking about a bill. In this case, we're here this evening to talk about an issue. We'd like to hear your thoughts about what's working well and not so well in the world of developing renewable energy in Vermont, the focus on solar siting. So I hope you'll stay on topic. And with that, that's it for setup, other than I'd love to start with Representative Olson, and go have everyone here on the two committees introduce themselves, so you'll know who you're speaking with this evening.
Great, thank you Chairman. Representative Oliver Olson, representing the towns of Jamaica, Lundy, Derry, Strath, Weston, and Tim, Hall, Wells, and Rupert.
Mariana Kabash, I'm from Franklin Four, representing the towns of Sheldon and Swanton.
I'm Mike Ebert, from Window One, and I represent Gilbert and Burn.
Bob Foregeis, I'm Representative from Springfield.
I'm Representative Rebecca Ellis, from Representative Waterbury, Huntington, and Bolton.
Chris Bray from Addison County.
Diane Staley from Chitting County.
Roy Campion, Benning County, Wyoming.
Senator Rogers, Aspen, Orleans.
Representative Harmon White, from Ferrisburg, Madison Three District.
I'm Marisol, I represent Southern Construction Corporation.
Representative Mike Intoschka, I represent Charlotte, Parkland, Combeville, and representing Eastmont, Philly, and Middlesex, and Chair of the House Natural Resources Department.
Okay, with that, Representative Ellis, can you kick us off, please?
Sure, so I'm randomly drawing names, someone's name is John McGuire, followed by Phil Poeh and Melanie Heiser.
Thank you very much. Good evening, I thought I got to pick a drawer for our -- Good evening, my name is John McGuire, and I represent my family, who own property that has proposed siting of 150 kilowatt solar field under construction at Mile Point in Ferrisburg, Vermont. The application to construct this field was submitted by Basin Harbor Board. The proposed field contains 25 solar tracking panels that are each the size of two GPS trucks mounted on 25-foot poles. I'm not here to discuss the merits of solar energy. Myself, my family, and many of our neighbors are huge proponents of solar energy. What I am here to present to this committee is a grave concern we have for the process and criteria by which fast-track projects are handled by the Public Service Board. Any solar project that is under 150 kilowatts is currently fast-tracked. Fast-track projects are not required to have a public certification, and are not site visits to that are not required as well. Therefore, a solar field the size of 25 NASA panels can receive a rubber stamp approval with incredibly minimal oversight. This, in my opinion, puts one of Vermont's greatest resources, its natural to have a great risk. The site at Mile Point went up with astonishing speed and little regard to any of the nearby properties. I was personally shocked that a project of this magnitude could be pushed through approvals with such disregard of consenting opinions, and failure to review such facts by adjoining landowners. My family made several comments to the Public Service Board regarding impacts to Lake Champlain, historic properties, as well as solar galera issues that pilots would encounter when landing at the airport next door. The solar galera analysis provided by the applicant was factually incorrect for the wrong reason, and still, the Public Service Board pushed this through. The applicant incorrectly stated on the application that no historic homes were close to proximity. This, too, was absolutely incorrect, yet it still went forward. In closing, solar energy is important, however, when it comes to fast-track projects, more oversight, attention to the site of such projects is desperately needed. I urge the committee members to stop the project at Mile Point.
Next, we have Phil Poeh, followed by Melanie Heiser and Jeff Forward.
Hi, I'm Phil Poach, Pooh with Pouch. Thank the committee for this opportunity, it's much appreciated. I'm employed in the renewable energy industry, I've been in manufacturing for 30-plus years, and for the last 10 years I've been in renewable energy. I'm also a Heinsberg Select Board member. I'd like to talk about manufacturing. 20 years I've worked for some very fine companies in Vermont, but those companies have dwindled a bit, and in one case, one of the companies I worked for went out of state. Renewable energy jobs are strong, good jobs for Vermonters. And as a Select Board member, certainly, you know, I get the idea of local control. I mean, that's, you know, part of the job. And we had the gas pipeline come through Heinsberg, or the permitting come through, and we had a full house in our town hall looking for a local control. And even though it wasn't something I wanted to have, I understand that the Public Service Board process is necessary to determine public good, and we cannot, as Select Board members or town members, really understand public good, because we can't really see outside of our borders. I think it's a mistake to put additional restrictions on solar energy. I believe they're deemed a public good, we have state policies stating so, and we have state goals stating they're public good. You know, it's clean renewable energy, it's cost-effective, has very low environmental impact, and it keeps dollars within our communities. I think solar success, recent success, has made of it targets of some interest, who really like the status quo, and don't see the need to change, and I do think that we need to change. So why did I come and drive here, to come and talk to you? I really came because I believe climate change is real, it's a moral issue, and it's the real public good. Thank you very much.
Next, we have -- Next, we have Melanie Heiser, followed by Jeff Forward and Jenny Stevens.
Hi, my name is Melanie Heiser, I am a resident of Moncton, and while I have a lot less experience in dealing with solar projects, I have been hearing about the pipeline potentially coming through my campus property. I simply want to make a very quick plea, I wasn't expecting to be where I'm at the heart of the line, but that there be local input into this process, it's extremely important, it's important for accountability reasons. The fact is, is that when neighbors have to talk to neighbors about the impact of a project, whether in solar, a pipeline, or anything else, the conversation changes dramatically. It is a lot easier to have a conversation at the state level, at which most neighbors cannot attend, that most neighbors do not understand, and about which most neighbors will not have information when these decisions are made. And I think it is imperative that those conversations happen at the local level. I think it changes the nature of them, it changes the level of transparency, and it changes the understanding of people in terms of what's happening with these projects. The second thing I wanted to say is that I think in Vermont in general, there is woefully lacking information about the process and about people's rights in the process. A statute is not enough. People need to have easily understood information that's accessible, whether that's online or in their local town halls, that explains to them what the process is, what their rights are under the process, what compensation is available to them, and what the implications are long-term for them of any energy project that is happening that will affect their property or affect their communities. I think until Vermont does that, and makes the process understandable to the average person, the average person doesn't have to spend 400 hours to study a topic and figure out what the implications are for him or for his or her family or community, the process is going to be broken in Vermont. I can tell you I have a law degree, I've been working on administrative justice issues for my entire career, and it took me months to figure out how to work within the Public Service Board process. I hope you will work on making it local, informative, and favorable.
Next, we have Jeff Forward, followed by Jenny Stevens and Jordana Jusidman.
Hello, thank you very much for taking a testimony. My name is Jeff Forward. I live on a 200-year-old farm in Richmond, Vermont. I have a 25-kilowatt group net metered solar project that I've built on my farm. One of the reasons why my wife and I invested in this project is that we believe strongly in community, and we hope that this project will help build community amongst our neighbors. And I have to say, I feel it's work. Twice a year, and it'll be soon, this probably is the next coming week, we gather our group members to change the orientation of our animals, and we give them hot chocolate and muffins, and we physically harvest the sun, feels like harvesting the sun, kind of bringing in shoots. Personally, I think my project looks beautiful. Just supposed against my store, I think it's a beautiful project. However, not all of my neighbors agree with me, not even all of my group members agreed with me when we first put it down. In fact, I had to put a thousand dollars' worth of trees on my property line to shield it from my neighbor. However, I get it, I understand change is hard, you know, a changing landscape is a difficult thing for many people to accept, but change we must. We're going to change when we want to, we're not. And I believe that it's imperative that we do everything we can to try to mitigate the worst aspects of climate change. And I believe projects like this, distributed energy projects throughout the state, are what's necessary to mitigate the worst aspects of trying to climate change. So I would hope you would take that into consideration, if you consider change as part of the process. Because I think I had to contact all of my neighbors before I did my project as part of the Public Service Board project, even for a small, small project. And I feel like it now. So thank you very much.
Next, we have Jenny Stevens, followed by Jordana Jusidman and David Fucci.
Thank you. I'm a professor at the University of Vermont with expertise in climate change and renewable energy innovation, and as a faculty member, I'm a joint appointment in the Rubinstein School of Environment and Natural Resources, and the College of Engineering and Mathematical Sciences, and I'm moving to Vermont this year. Urgency in responding to the growing threats of climate change requires that the state of Vermont accelerate and encourage renewable energy deployment. The state should not take steps that could create additional barriers that could slow down solar development. Solar energy offers clean electricity that is essential for reducing greenhouse gas emissions, building more resilient, stable, and local energy systems. One challenge of the development of renewable energy is that many of us are not accustomed to seeing our energy infrastructure on our landscape. We plug in our computers and our phones, but we do not know where the electricity is coming from, and often it has been coming from faraway, large-scale power plants. But with the powerful opportunities and benefits of local distributed clean renewable energy right here in Vermont, we now have to get familiar with solar installations on our landscape as we connect our energy use with local generation. So to maintain its leadership in energy innovation, to move away from fossil fuel reliance, and to expand job opportunities in renewable energy, the state of Vermont needs to accept, facilitate, support, and encourage renewable energy projects, in particular, solar energy. Thank you.
Next, we have Jordana Jusidman, followed by David Fucci and Steve Wright.
Good evening, my name is Jordana Jusidman, really close. And I am a Vermont Law School graduate, who was fortunate to actually stay in the state where I wanted to remain, because I found a job in the renewable energy industry. Took me a couple of years to get there, and when I did, I felt like the most lucky graduate from the Law School. So my familiarity since coming into the industry has been with permitting projects that are 500 kilowatts and larger. So in my experience, the process as is is really quite onerous, it's rigorous for developers, even prior to submitting a 45-day notice, which does go to local municipalities, to planning commissions, to Select Board members, to neighbors. We spend months doing due diligence at the site to ensure that the project location is a good one, and we work with a lot of experts to make that determination. So I think that we need to be very cautious when we proceed in amending a process that I believe already functions in -- that already functions well and is quite rigorous. If we do make the process more challenging, what we stand to lose are the following: jobs, tax, electricity prices that are going to go down as we bring in more renewable projects online, local offsetting the distribution and transmission charges with local distributed generation, and that's not even talking about the effects of climate change mitigation.
Next, we have David Fucci, followed by Steve Wright and Annette Smith.
My name's Dave Fucci, and I represent a group called Vermonters for Green Environment. So our group is probably the only group in this room that has taken on the process of opposing a solar project to the PSB, and kept the project at bay for almost 10 years. Also, and sadly to say, the only group naive enough to actually think that we would have to be treated with some fairness and justice associated with this process. There is no consideration given to individuals, municipalities, or regions, as we can attest. Our group and our town's two-year odyssey with the process got actually no consideration at all, was this, we didn't even exist. Sure, the PSB went through the motions, but in the end, according to the decision, complaints can't be addressed, since as a neighbor, you are not considered an average Vermonter, and as the town, your siting regulations you put in place have no standing with the board. They, the PSB, state that the average Vermonter is only the people driving by such projects, and these projects do not offend these people. I think they are sorely mistaken. I would also like to interject that a responsible solar developer looked at the Cold River site and said there was no way he would pursue this project, as he stated, he would not do this to this neighborhood, as this was a totally wrong site. I would advise any other party thinking that they are going to be treated fairly by the PSB in the process to forget about it. Save your time, money, and energy, and know the only options available to you are to either purchase the land at three times what it's worth, I might add, before the solar company does, or sell your home at a considerable loss, if you can sell it at all, and move. I know these words of advice are meant with great pleasure from the solar developers in this room, as a part of respect, honor, descent in their favor. Maybe you solar developers should rethink your policies, because if you continue on your current path, you may not like the outcome. As a third-generation Vermonter, who will be joining the exodus of others who have left this state, we so much loved at one time, we must ask, what happened to the state that was champion for the rights of individual over profits of companies, who are only seeing green? And by green, I mean the color of money. Unless new rules are adopted by the legislature to put some balance in this process, our state will become known as the Green Meadow State, instead of the Green Mountain State.
Thank you very much.
And tourism, our number-one income producer, will become a fading memory.
Next is Steve Wright, followed by Annette Smith and Caleb Elder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it's great to see you folks gathered yet again in a momentous event in Room 11. Mr. Chair, I have a question, and I hope it's not unseemly or rude. Is it appropriate for the committees to have speakers to identify whether or not they have direct financial interests in the industry we're discussing?
Yes. Speaker, the panel, or the speaker?
Speaker, no, not the panel.
I invite any speaker who comes up tonight to say their name, where they're from, and if they have affiliation with one another. We require disclosure, if you or have that any -- The opinions are what we're interested in hearing, not the messenger of those opinions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Steve Wright, I'm from Crasberry. I've been in Crasberry for almost 50 years, I know that doesn't qualify me as that magic thing called a real Vermonter, but I'm okay with that. I have one piece of information. I am retired, Mr. Chair, from the National Wildlife Federation, from where I worked for eight years as a climate change educator. My professional background is in aquatic biology. I have three points wrapped within two contexts. The first context is to hang on to what we have, and what we have is an incredible assembly of healthy ecosystems. It is those ecosystems that allow us to eat, sleep, breathe, reproduce, and other mammalian functions.
Can you please submit your written testimony, so the committee can hear your forward line?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
I do have copies, I recommend the abstract.
Next, we have Annette Smith, followed by Caleb Elder and Anne Hogan.
Thank you, my name is Annette Smith, I'm the Director of Vermonters for Clean Environment, I've lived in Danby, I've lived, I've lived with solar for 25 years, I'm a big fan of solar. I want to first start by answering your question, one of your first questions with regard to solar development and siting, how well is the current PSB approval process working in terms of achieving the state's energy goals? Vermont has no renewable energy goals in statute. Vermont has a comprehensive energy plan, it is not in statute, but has a goal of 90% renewables by 2050. The current PSB process is not working to achieve the state's goals. Current PSB approval process is working very well in terms of achieving Massachusetts and Connecticut's energy goals, as required by their renewable portfolio standards. I will submit the rest of the answers to your questions in writing. I'm going to switch to the fact that we now have two separate standards for land use. We have a PSB standard and the Act of 50 standard. The PSB has no front door, there is nobody to talk to who can answer questions. Act of 50 has a district coordinator, an intereven, who talks to the public and answers questions. The PSB requires a written motion to intervene, along with a notice of appearance and certificate of service in order to dispute. Act of 50 enables citizens to come go free-time conference and see party status by telling the district commission what their interests are. The PSB requires regional municipal planning commissions and Select Boards to -- excuse me, the PSB has a website that posts only the petition filed by the applicant, but rarely posts filings by any other parties. Act of 50 has a website with a database that posts all the filings in case. The PSB has no enforcement capabilities. Act of 50 has a dedicated enforcement officer. The PSB gives due consideration to regional and municipal plans, it gives no consideration to zoning bylaws. Act of 50 must find compliance with regional and municipal plans and zoning bylaws before issuing a proposal. The PSB has no statutory requirement to consider impacts of prime agricultural soils. Act of 50 has requirements that impacts of prime agricultural soils must be mitigated by conserving prime agricultural soils, also provided for two predetermined ratios. The PSB permits development above 2,500 feet. Act of 50 does not allow the whole amount of 2,500 feet. I have some more house announcements I'm writing, I came here in --
Next, we have Caleb Elder, followed by Anne Hogan, and then Pat Sagui. I think we'll -- So next, we have Anne Hogan, followed by Pat Sagui, and then Keith Ballack.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Anne Hogan, and I'm here on behalf of the town of Sheldon. Sheldon is positioned on a siting of solar energy facilities subject to the Public Service Board review process is this. The permitting system is overwhelmingly one-sided and favorable to state, and a fairer balancing of state and municipal voices in interest needs to be heard. Sheldon's town plan supports energy diversification, and we assert here that the state's twin goals of increasing the availability of renewable energy and of decreasing reliance on fossil fuels is being met. According to the data provided by Vermont Sustainable Jobs Fund, Sheldon alone has close to 70 solar installations, and has 2,700 kilowatt solar generating capacity. However, many of us in the town feel that municipalities must have a greater say in the Section 248 review process. To address how the existing law might be changed to correct this imbalance, Sheldon believes that towns and cities must have the authority to request technical details regarding proposed solar facilities in their community, authority to require the PSB to conduct a public hearing in their community, authority to appear and participate in any application seeking a certificate of public good in their community, and finally, the PSB must show substantial deference to any specific mandatory provisions contained in the municipality's comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Pat Sagui, followed by Keith Ballack, and then Alan Pierce.
Hello, my name is Pat Sagui, and I'm a resident of Westfield, and I just have one very small but maybe very valuable suggestion, and that is, that without a grasp of our capacity to produce a certain amount of energy, we really can't make these decisions about siting, and I would like to call your tech to numbers from the National Renewable Energy Lab, they're about a year old now, and they estimated that just the rooftop solar capacity for the northeast region of the United States is about 76 gigawatts, and that's a big number, and it happens that that's about what we use now in New York and New England, total. So, and if that's just on rooftop, then what that tells me is that we have a lot of opportunity to be incredibly selective about where we cite these facilities, and that being, the data simply does not support build more everywhere, anywhere, we just, we have options here, and so that is what I offer to you. We just, we have options here, and so that is what I offer to you, to explore that some more and to look at this idea of what our real capacity is, and that in the spirit of Act 250, that we can make this shift and still preserve our land stewardship values.
Next, we have Keith Ballack, followed by Alan Pearce, and then Paul Bruhoff.
Hi, I'm Keith Ballack. I live in Sheffield. I'm a vice chair of the Sheffield Planting Commission. I'm also on the Caladonia County Democratic Committee as committee man. I'm going to read something from the Vermont Democratic Party platform, the energy section, that transition to low impact renewable energy means, considering the medium and long-term environmental and human health impacts. The energy committee here, I think, needs to decipher what really is low impact and renewable, and what is just nothing more than big energy masquerading as green energy, which I see some of this, I mean, as far as the environmental impacts. Remember, the environment record has been removed from the citing process. There's yet to be any oversight by the Vermont Department of Health or any data collection from visits to homes from families living next to industrial wind projects, suffering noise, people have been forced from their home, a number of people, including my neighbor. Had a couple of meetings to react to the energy citing commission, if you remember that, two years ago. There was recommendations, the responses from the energy committee chair, Tony Klein, was the following: "I don't know why we're all here. This is a waste of time," was one. Another one was, "I'm not here to listen to the neighbors." This issue has been swept under the carpet and ignored for quite some time now. The Caladonia County Democratic Committee has passed a resolution along with Arne, Windham, and Lemoine Counties, asking the legislators to address the citing concerns with industrial-scale wind projects on sensitive high elevations. Two more counties are also considering doing this. Last Saturday, the Vermont State Democratic Committee took up the same resolution. One of the reasons it didn't pass was that some of the people in the room were convinced that something will actually happen from this hearing here tonight. They were assured by our vice chair. This remains to be seen. I hope you'll take more citizen input and less from the energy lobbyists. Remember, the misinformation the PSB was fed by the developer on noise issues, CO2 reductions, and power outwits, which has been 20 to 30% below the predictions. You need to look at ICE on New England for the real facts, not the companies that own the projects, because you're going to get a whole different story.
Next is Alan Pearce, followed by Paul Bruhoff and Philip Allen.
Good evening. My name is Alan Pearce. I live in Ducksbury, and I'm a member of Waterbury Leap, which is the town energy committee for Ducksbury and Waterbury. In 2013 and 2014, we assisted our town in citing three community-scale renewable energy projects: 35-kilowatt array on the municipal building, 150-kilowatts for the middle school, and a 500-kilowatt array for the village. We reviewed over 30 potential sites. One and only one site was suitable for the 500-kilowatt array, which was a large parcel of village-owned land. One and only one site was suitable for the middle school, which was six tenths of an acre on the school-owned land. And one and only one site was suitable for the municipal building, and that was the rooftop. So we had learned firsthand what the barriers are to citing renewable energy in Vermont are, and those barriers are formidable. The first major barrier and challenge is three-phase power lines. Most 150-kilowatt arrays and 500-kilowatts, all 500-kilowatt systems must be connected to a three-phase power line. These power lines are scarce throughout Vermont and scarcer still in Waterbury. In Ducksbury, we have 31 miles of road and half a mile of three-phase line. That means there's only one site, and one site only, for a 500-kilowatt array for community solar in Ducksbury. The second barrier is finding suitable land. Land must be flat, open, south-facing, outside of floodplain, outside of historical districts, with low agricultural value and low economic value. Our town and Waterbury Leap are committed to achieving the goals set out in the Vermont Comprehensive Energy Plan. It is very difficult to find parcels of land that can support community-scale arrays. It is the major barrier to achieving our energy goals. Any additional barriers to citing in the forms of setbacks, for example, will likely make community-scale renewable energy all but impossible in Vermont. Thank you.
Next is Paul Bruhoff, followed by Philip Allen, and then Jerry Mullin.
My name is Paul Bruhoff. I live in the town of Sutton. I'm the planning chair for our town, and my title this past is pro-boat. My property abuts the Sheffield Wind Project, and the nearest turbine is about 1,100 feet from my property boundary. My house is a mile downwind from the project, and as such, I'm frequently aware of and annoyed by both the noise and the visual impact of the project. Since November 2002, when the first net tower was erected on Arts Scrabble Mountain without PSB permit, I have participated in every public service docket available to me. At no time during this period has my involvement made a perceptible difference in any outcome. It has been as if I and the experts I retained testified and not even been present in all the hearings, court proceedings, and public meetings. Further, the votes of BART, southern towns about the project were ignored, and even the direction of the Northeastern Vermont Development Association's regional plan was dismissed. In their decision at the end of Docket 7156 proceedings, the Public Service Board ignored statutory direction to provide reliably available electrical power at least cost. At that time, Vermont's electric power supplier relied less than 1% on fossil fuel-produced power, and since then, Vermont has lost major suppliers of emission-free nuclear and hydro power as it switched to expensive, unreliably available wind and solar power, which must be fully backed up by coal and natural gas generation. In order to meet the state's energy goals, a much better option would have been to renegotiate our long-term baseload hydro-powered contracts at much more favorable rates with our Canadian neighbors. The current process serves merchant and solar power developers exceedingly well at the expense of the citizens of Vermont. I have further remarks for the next.
Next is Philip Allen, followed by Jerry Mullin and Kate Cole.
Hello. My name is Philip Allen, and I'm a Rockland Town resident and co-owner of St. Son of Vermont, which is a city of Rockland. The solar citing standards began for Rockland Town's attempt to stop a 2.3-megawatt array on Cold River Road. I attended many of the meetings leading up to the citing standards. It's important to know that in Rockland Town, at every select board meeting, the majority of the room, for the project and for solar in general. The only vote that's ever taken place in Rockland Town regarding solar was a valid initiative for the town to commit to $130,000 bond to solarize the Rockland Town school. It passed 1,100 votes, 800 votes approximately. Rockland Town was asked to pay for solar, and we did, and that solar array is 100% visible. The Cold River Road piece of land in Rockland Town has been on the market for more than eight years. Rockland Town is unzoned, and in the regional plan going back to 1970s, it is designated as an industrial site. There's a dump across the street from the site. There are a few people who live near the site who don't want to see it there, and I understand that, and they came up with the money and the political clout to delay the project, but not the project. If a piece of unzoned land, unsellable for years, and the regional plan is industrial, cannot have a solid eight-and-a-half-foot structure built on it, where can it be built? We have fellow Americans who right now are struggling with eminent domain. For example, our friends in Nebraska are fighting to keep their land from the XL pipeline. Here in Vermont, we have public servants who want to tell people who privately own land that they cannot sell that land to a private company who wants to build a solar array that will produce millions of kilowatt-hours of clean solar power. The government dictating that I cannot sell my land and make a profit from a company that wants to create a product that is in the public good, that is perversion of the marketplace, RBN communism. While in theory, I believe in local control, I've seen it close, but, all right. Thank you very much.
Next is Jerry Mullin, followed by Keith Cole, and then Charles Johnson.
Good evening. Jerry Mullin, I'm prepared with a selectmen from Bolton. Going to change what I was actually originally going to say based on some of the things I've been hearing. I've been convinced for a long, long time that there's such a thing as global warming. I remember, in spite of this cold February they had, I remember in February back in '53, I couldn't get two milk cans out of a cooler because they were frozen in at 43 degrees below zero. I haven't seen a temperature like that in decades. But one of the things that has bothered me, I installed 32 solar panels on my roof a couple of years back, and in fact, we did 63 kilowatt-hours just yesterday. But what's bothered me is that when we did that, we had to apply to become a power generating station. There were hearings on it, as it turns out, nobody objected, but there were hearings that the neighbors couldn't come to and object to it. And what I'm hearing from so many people here is that the Public Service Board is letting big agencies come in, private agencies come in, and build big, big things without very much supervision. I would hope that the Public Service Board would consider the local power, the local civil power, and the local neighbors when they start permitting these kind of events, or I'm trying to say here, these kind of installations.
Thank you. Next is Kate Cole, followed by Charles Johnson, and then Lincoln Lan.
Hi, I'm Kate Cole, and I'm proud to call Vermont a home. The University of Vermont and its strong environmental program drew me to Vermont in the first place, and the beauty of Vermont and the character of its peaceful cause in this state. From me to you go hand in hand, environment and community. We're a state that cares about ourselves and one another so much that we've chosen to lead the energy revolution and setting an example for the rest of the nation to follow along to itself. In going renewable, we are bettering our present and our future. This takes a certain foresight that is missing in a lot of other places. It's the reason I came to Vermont and the reason I couldn't return to where I grew up. I'm from Pennsylvania, where we don't have our energy out together like Vermont does. PA's reliance on dirty energy, namely natural gas and the obstruction process that comes along with it, fracking, is tearing my home state apart. Here's some perspective: While some Vermonters worry about having to look at solar from their backyard, folks in PA have actual pipelines running through theirs. And if you think it's out of sight, out of mind, you're wrong. I have friends who can't drink their tap water and others who can light theirs on fire. Some have lost land that has been in their family for generations, and other folks can't use their land for agricultural purposes anymore because of the disturbances caused by fracking. So when I think about making the barriers to solar more difficult than they already are in Vermont, I feel very scared. We have to get our energy needs from somewhere, so we've been ignoring all the overwhelming pros of renewables. We must realize when we distance ourselves from solar, we create a vacuum for another energy field to fill. Again, by making solar more difficult, we're inevitably ushering in dirtier alternatives. I don't want this state to suffer the way Pennsylvania has suffered. We must move toward our goal of 90% renewables by 2050 and away from the consequences of a dirty energy economy, because I care about my backyard and I care about yours too, just like most Vermonters. The time for short-term thinking is over. We're in this together, so let's make our backyards part of the solution and not the
Next is Charles Johnson, followed by Lincoln Lan, and then Don Toffee.
Thank you. My name is Charles Johnson from Eastmont Pilgrim. I'm a big fan of solar. I'm a big opponent of industrial wind on our rich lines, and that's what I'm going to speak about strictly tonight. If I'm off-base, you only have to put up with me for two minutes. I'm a scientist by training. I have a PhD in environmental science and a master's degree in wildlife biology, but I want to veer into something else tonight. It rarely comes up in meetings that exist, and that's the word "love." In particular, the love of the land, and I think it is very germane. We usually treat land as a collection of values or bundle of rights, resources that we use. Even Act 250 works this way with its eight criteria. But land, in my mind, is much more than that. It's part of our cultural memory, our physical foundation, and our personal identity. Love of the land is real if it can't be quantified. It's one of the most basic and universal of all feelings, about places that nurture us physically and spiritually, from birth to death. It is not a small thing. People go to war over it, give up their lives for it. Many feel a damage to a beloved physical environment is as hurtful as damage to oneself. The loss is felt as keenly. And this is how I feel about industrial wind on our rich lines. It's a matter of ethics, not a matter of science, and how we relate to the land and how much we can take from it. I'm in favor of renewables, but would like us to follow the e-locally, bi-locally model. Get energy locally, use energy locally as much as possible. Solar, wood and cogeneration, small wind, small hydro, efficiency and conservation. I remember the windmills on farms that used to bring water up to our homes and livestock, how in keeping with the setting they were in our way of life. I hope we can keep that image in front of us now, and I hope we'll not be afraid to talk about love. Thank you.
Next is Lincoln Lan, followed by Don Toffee, and then Richard Ratico.
Good evening. My name is Lincoln Laney, and I work in Vermont's renewable energy industry, and more specifically, I'm involved in solar installations, primarily with installations above 500 KW. A little bit about myself, I'm from Vermont. I went to school elsewhere for undergrad, came back, went to Vermont Law, got a law degree. It is really the solar industry that has allowed me to stay in Vermont. I work specifically in citing some of these projects, and I can echo the comments of the gentleman from Ducksbury about how challenging it is to cite these solar projects. I enjoy my job. I like being in Vermont, and my concern is that we make these projects so onerous that they cannot be built, that we can't find sites, and then unfortunately, I'm out of the job. So I would like to stay in Vermont and keep my mission here. I am quite familiar with the current process, the Public Service Board as well, specifically I've assisted in preparation of filings at the board to construct some of these installations. I'm also involved in the technical aspect in adjusting some of the layouts that really respect the stakeholder concerns. Based on my experiences in the industry, in my permanent specific experience, I do support the current process for a number of reasons. First, it does provide the opportunity for local voices to be heard, allows people to get involved in the process, express their concerns, and work towards a solution. Public input has and will continue to modify these proposed projects. Part of my position fails to address all the stakeholder concerns, as I already stated. It advances the overall public good for an energy system that we so desperately need and rely on, whether it be for climate change or energy security reasons. If we were to change the process, our ability to meet these state energy goals that we are striving for, which is supported by the majority of Vermonters, could be in jeopardy as well. And I was going to address my comments.
Thank you. Next is Dr. Chavi, followed by Richard Ratico, and then Henry Fontex. And I apologize for my mispronouncing. You know somebody's name.
Mr. Chairman, sir, I brought these from the President's meeting, which has been very challenging. These are the tests we made. And this is the resolution signed by 37 towns in the state of Vermont. I've shortened these up considerably, and as anyone in this room that knows me knows, for me to finish in two minutes would make the Guinness Book of Records.
We'll help you.
I'm sure you will. And what we're talking about here this evening is a political problem. It's a constitutional problem, and it's one of the most basic of home rule conflicts. The most recent decision on the Cold River Road project in Rockland Town makes it undeniably clear that neither planning commissions nor elected bodies such as select boards have any standing whatsoever in the 248 process.
have any standing whatsoever in the 248 process as presently constructed. Hundreds of hours of deliberate, thoughtful, and responsive and interactive community planning that has been fostered, indeed required, by state-wide rules for local and regional bodies have been trashed and rendered useless by this decision. There are serious consequences of such irresponsible conduct by our own PSV. When any community at the local level takes the planning of local development and the view sheds of its local citizens seriously enough to develop a clear and consistent statement as required by the Gueche analysis provision long-held as the prevailing standard in the deliberative process, then we have to seriously question just what usefulness is served by having appointed bodies at the state level able to completely override elected officials and all the citizens they represent at the local level who are engaged in community planning. This decision is of great concern to our town and its grand list. Battles have been fought at every level to determine the values of properties and just what impact the view shed and aesthetics of a neighborhood quality has on those values. It's a well-founded fact that hundreds of thousands of citizens in our state have invested their life's work in properties and homesteads that a great portion of that value is attributed to view, many times a great pastoral scenic or forest and field ambiance. Well, we are representing thirty-seven communities in this particular issue, and it's of great significance, and it needs to be... We need to restore local community participation in this as the Constitution requires. Thank you, Ms. Bishop.
Next is Richard Ratico, followed by Henry Bonitz, and then Emily McManamy.
Good evening. My name is Richard Ratico. I'm an electrical contractor in Bradford, Vermont, and I've built grid tie and off-grid electrical systems for thirteen years. Grid-tied solar has grown from a rare project in 1999 to the situation today where installations are commonplace. The drivers of this growth have been the demonstrated reliability of solar, the increasing affordability of these systems, the recognition of the threat posed by global warming, and Vermont's enlightened policies. I'm very proud of the role the state, the Public Service Board, our utilities, and our citizens have played in getting us this far. By democratic means, we've established that installed amounts of renewable energy should reach the specific milestones in the not distant future. Our goals are ambitious, as they should be. Since we wish to maintain the momentum we've worked so hard to establish, it is critical that we not impose citing standards or other hurdles that potentially jeopardize our objectives. Beauty is in the eye of the beholder. It is pointless to argue. What to one person looks like a sea of billboards, to others is a well-organized, functionally attractive, non-polluting generator of convenient and critical electrical power. One of the House Energy Committee's members recently said she thought it was a good thing that our generation facilities were visible. That's a profound statement. We have been spoiled by having our power come from plants located far away. If many of our electrical generation facilities are visible, as are our solar farms and winters, perhaps we'll become more food and aware.
Next is Henry Bonitz, followed by Emily McManamy and Christopher Loris. I could have mispronounced that name, but Henry, B-O-N-T-E-S? Okay, next is Emily McManamy.
Hello, thank you for taking the time with us tonight. I heard a meeting on the cup of beer up lately from Orwell. She was unable to make the travel tonight. I was born into the world with oil lamps, well water pumps by hand, and horses for travel. Then the automobile and telephone in every home led to a cellphone in every hand. And now we have electricity from the sun. Watch out, world, I can't believe it. For twenty-six years, I've lived above a meadow where the sun is always shining. For twenty-six years, I've had that meadow to myself, and I've enjoyed the view. But now, for the first time, that meadow is working for me. I am now opposed to community solar array that allows up to thirty households to benefit from solar for the first time in my house of glory. I was looking for a way to create a more sustainable, secure future for myself. Sun Common's community solar array program was such an opportunity. They came to my property, and we walked through the meadow, and we talked, and I could see no reason not to go forth with solar. It is my property after all, and my decision. I'm A-OK with my solar farm. I'm hearing people saying we need more jurisdictions about where these arrays are allowed to go, but that might mean people like myself wouldn't be able to have a solar array. You should come to my place and see my array. It's not disturbing anyone. Very much like the big skilled barn that was built on my property, my solar array rests quiet and still in my meadow. I'm proud to have found a way to further Vermont's working landscape. I'm happy to be helping my neighbors and fellow Asden County residents benefit from solar. I don't think Vermont is too much more popular to tell us what we can do with our property because it's not hurting anyone. We work hard to have what we have. We should be allowed the freedom to use our land to support our own future and Vermont's energy future. I'd hate to see other Vermonters miss out on this wonderful opportunity. Thank you.
Next is Christopher Loris, followed by Kim Fried and Carol Irons.
Hopefully, you'll tie me on a curve if I forgot my greeting the last...
It's all the same.
Good evening. I'm Christopher Loris, the mayor of the city of Rutland. In this press release announcing this hearing, the public was asked to provide adequate consideration for the preferences of municipalities. Rutland's experiences clearly demonstrate yes, and we can serve as a model for other communities to follow. Rutland City worked through its redevelopment authority and board of aldermen to define a list of criteria that was important to the community for solar development citing, including size, economics, neighborhood considerations, and choice of site-specific parcels. We provided locations and associated criteria to more than eight large and small developers with great effect. Our proactive engagement with stakeholders from project conception through design, public outreach, and finally build-out has resulted in a wide range of projects that address the community needs. We have proved that open communication and honest discussions will result in mutually beneficial outcomes. Second question: Does the PSV process integrate the needs of the state as a whole with the needs of the individual communities? Again, Rutland's experience has been even more uncapable, yes. What best demonstrates this integration is articulated in one word: resiliency. In 2007, a ninety mile an hour on a hurricane wind event struck Rutland, well before tropical storm Irene revved, the state destroyed our electrical grid. The city of Rutland determined that our power delivery systems in both transmission and distribution were being put at great risk by more frequent storms of greater intensity. We recognize that society needs to rethink and re-engineer our electrical utility system and move away from holes in wires, twigs in twine, toward a more reliable distributed generation model to further our resilience to inevitable future events. Thank you.
Next is Kim Fried, followed by Carol Irons and Betsy Hardy.
Two minutes is short, so I'll try to read my handwriting as quickly as I can. I'm Kim Fried, Chair of the Newark Planning Commission. I want to thank you for letting me testify this evening. I have two observations I would like to share with you. We basically have two groups at all of the citing commission meetings, studies, and hearings, no different than this evening. We have one group, which is basically made up of state out-of-country and in-state developers, their lobbyists, their lawyers, their industry groups, and special interest groups. And they claim everything is fine with citing. It just needs to go faster. This is what I call the money group. The other group is concerned Vermont citizens, Vermont citizen groups, select board members, planning commission members, town managers. And this group is growing every day enormously. The second group feels that the system is broken and needs to be changed to allow the non-business Vermont citizens and communities to have a strong say in how their towns and communities are developed. If the system is working so well, as Group One will tell you it is, why are there so many losses? Why did the governor appoint this special generation citing commission? A hundred-and-three-page report, which I hope you read. Why did the Public Service Board order dock at 8167? Why are there nine citing house bills and two citing senate bills presently in front of you in a larger and larger group of Vermont citizens and towns demanding change? Please bring democracy back into this process for Vermont citizens. Thank you. I extend it my...
Next is Carol Irons, followed by Betsy Hardy and Dwayne Peterson.
I'm Carol Irons, a resident of Aldeney. I looked from my home at the local wind project. I was involved with that whole process, to the best of my ability, as just a regular citizen. And I found the experience taught me that we have lost our democracy. We now live in a corporate bureaucracy. The whole process is controlled by the corporate interests and those politicians that work for them. I would like to point out that the word "renewable" is a very special word that was first coined by environmentalists. Wind, sunshine, and flowing waters are renewable. Industrial sites are not. Clearcutting, blasting, bulldozing, miles of impermeable surfaces, light flicker noise that you hear and the vibration that you don't hear but that affects the neurological systems of all animals, including the two-legged, industrial sites by people's homes, health effects, these things are not renewable. They are destructive. The destruction of watershed areas that affect all the wildlife that are part of our lifeways. The PSV approval process enables developers to do what they want, wherever they want. This appears to be the Public Service Board's definition of "public good". It's the only definition I've ever been able to figure out from their rulings. I would like to suggest three improvements to the process. One is to apply the Gueche analysis for the neighbors and the local communities. The second is to replace the Public Service Board, go back to Act 250. And the third is to encourage individual and small-town energy projects rather than industrial scale that does not belong on our landscape. Thank you very much.
And thank you all for your work, and thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I am not connected with any energy companies. My name is Betsy Hardy. I am coordinator of Vermont Interfaith Powerlight, a nonprofit working to address the climate crisis with communities of faith statewide. For me and others we work with, this is a moral and spiritual issue. The climate crisis is seriously impacting people and ecosystems worldwide. At the core are being cursed and worse. Our actions, particularly the burning of fossil fuels, is a large part of what's causing the crisis. We need to take significant steps to turn this around. Reducing the use of energy through conservation and energy efficiency is very important. And it's important to switch from using fossil fuels to using clean renewable energy. My home enrichment is also the office of Vermont Interfaith Powerlight. It has a solar array on the roof and is now being heated by cold climate heat pumps. Fossil fuels are no longer needed at my home. In recent years, the legislature has passed good legislation such as the net heating bill to help Vermonters go solar. I hope you will continue to encourage non-thwart solar energy in Vermont. Along with energy conservation and energy efficiency, solar and other renewables offer ways to take significant steps to address the climate crisis. Community solar arrays are also important. Not everyone has good solar access on their property. These arrays provide clean, safe, renewable solar energy for Vermont communities. I love our land, I love all creation, and want to keep our world livable for humanity, all beings, and future generations. Please continue to encourage solar energy. Thank you.
Next is Dwayne Peterson, followed by Bob Walker and David Flitterstork.
Good evening. My name is Dwayne Peterson. I'm one of the co-founders of Sun Common, and I proudly say that. Sun Common is a Vermont benefit corporation. We are a purpose, values-led, market solution to climate change. We believe that all Vermonters have the right to a healthy environment and a safer world, and clean energy is a good place to start. We found that solar power now can power our lives, heat our homes, and fuel our cars. So our mission is to knock down the barriers that have made renewable energy inaccessible. And we do that by making it easy and affordable so that all Vermonters can be part of repowering our state. We apply a community organizing approach to sharing this opportunity to finally make it easy and affordable for Vermonters to go solar. We're just three years old. When we started, there were fifteen hundred solar arrays built in Vermont within a decade, and we've added twelve hundred. We have a hundred people working for us. And the money we're saving our fellow Vermonters will add up to tens of millions of dollars. We're very proud of the work that we do. One of the things that we've discovered, though, is that we cite a lot of people now about the opportunity to go solar, but we have to say to about thirty-five percent of them that we can't help them. Their roads are unsuitable for solar. They face east-west, or they're in the trees. They don't have ground mountain opportunity in their yards. We hate saying no to Vermonters who want to help build our clean energy economy. So we created a community solar array approach. We call it CSAs. And so Vermont is one of only a handful of states in the country that has the sense to allow so-called group net heating. A bunch of electricity customers can benefit from a single solar array. So we have homeowners, we have landowners, we have farmers who are willing to dedicate a slice of their land, maybe an acre, to help provide clean energy to thirty of their neighbors. The CSA program is tremendously popular. Thank you.
Next is Bob Walker, followed by David Flitterstork and Diana Leeser.
Good evening. I'm Bob Walker from Brown Jimin, and I'm a member of the Board of the Gas. I'm a member from all four generations, and I have a duty in common sense. I'm here to say that I don't believe we need either solar or wind as a source of power here in Vermont. Hydroelectric power is available to us. It is renewable, and it is environmentally friendly while at the same time being a less expensive way for us to go to satisfy the power needs of our state. I want to continue briefly with my opinion regarding what I see happening in Vermont. I sincerely believe that we are now the most liberal state in the country. It is my feeling that the leadership we are presently experiencing is supposed to be in a dictatorship. be in a dictatorship. Our governor has the authority to appoint a committee and a board such as yourself. And if he has a conflict of interest with a civilian in Vermont and you don't agree with him, he has the power to replace you with those who do agree. For some time, Vermont has been growing down a slippery slope with a runaway trend as far as our state government is concerned. Before I implore you as a board to please think seriously about issues which come before you, considering each and every long-term effort your decisions might possibly have on all Vermonters. Before voting on them, do not just blindly follow the leader of the governor, which you all be proud to live in this state and should have the strength and courage to think for ourselves. I had a head-on collision sixteen months ago. I had a tree find in Brownings and one in Barton, and I was on my back in a nursing home. We have forty-four acres. I have some mental problems from a head-on collision. I was not allowed to testify. So once I got out, nobody was in favor of the solar panels in Barton whatsoever except the developer and the zoning people. They said that was in compliance. You people came along, yeah, I'll get out of here. You people came along and put ten thousand panels five hundred feet from my car and said I would not be allowed to come in and testify. I won't thank you for letting me be here. Thank you very much.
We are our language. We're not fluent, sir, and I just want you to know that because we represent all the people. And I don't know who you're upset with, but I just want you to know that.
You represent all the people?
Yeah.
My problem, well, I'm done. Let's hold my two minutes. Here's my paperwork.
Thank you, sir.
Are you gone?
You can get out of that chair if you need me to come help you.
I'm okay. You don't want to lift two hundred and ninety pounds.
Next is David Glitterstore, followed by Diana Leeser and Representative Tom Terrenceini.
My name is David Glitterstore. I've been in the wind and solar business for thirty-four years, a native of Vermont. We're up here, and I'm very proud of what Vermont is doing. We have led on many issues for the nation. We are now leading the nation on solar and renewable energy. We put in place, and I'm proud to say, I've worked many years with the legislature, we put in place the first very good net metering laws, especially group net metering. It was a concept ten years ago that was far-fetched, but we made it happen. We put in standard offer, a feed-in tariff program that was the first in the nation, so we led again. We also put in place a registration program for solar, a first in the nation again. Other states have never done this. Germany does this sort of thing, but no state has ever done it. So we are leading, and it would be really sad with climate change and with finite resources like oil peaking that we would back away from what we're doing today. We must continue on, and we must continue doing this in a less complex way, not more complex. While the registration program for net metering came about, one of my testimonies before the legislature was, how come we permit good things and we register bad things? And I suggested at the time, why don't we start permitting SUVs and gas dozen cars and see how long that would take to register a car? Probably a year or more. So these are things that we're doing right, and we can't back away from doing the right things. And, thank you.
Next is Diana Leeser, followed by Representative Tom Terrenceini and Suzanne Sawyer.
Diana. Diane. Hi. My name is Diana Leeser, and I'm a landowner in Bennington. I'm committed to responsible stewardship of my land, my town, and my state. Solar power, among other renewable energy sources, contribute to that end. However, proper placement of solar arrays also contribute to responsible stewardship of our land. I'm not here to debate the merits of solar power. I am here to comment on the process by which facilities are permitted. Bennington, Woodford, and Woodford, to my understanding, have three solar arrays in progress. It is also my understanding that developers must notify the others of impending selection. The property owners in my neighborhood of Bennington were not notified until heavy equipment rumbled through and unloaded in order to begin excavation of what they thought incorrectly was the all right of way. Throughout this solar odyssey, our voices have not been heard. This, for me, is an issue of civil liberty. Citizens' voices need to be heard, considered, and valued.
Given Representative Terrenceini out there, can Mike be willing to speak to the committee since you're in the building every day and give your spot for folks who have traveled?
Well, I just wish you had said something before the hearing because I've got to drive an hour and fifteen minutes home now.
Well, come on up.
Thank you. Thank you. We're only getting two minutes.
You're in the building every day, and the rest of these people travel to be here.
So let's jump right in.
You all done? All done? All done? I'm gonna get my two minutes here, Rob. Good evening. My name is Tom Terrenceini. I have the privilege of representing the town of Brooklyn in this district chamber. Brooklyn Town does not oppose solar energy, nor is it included in the mix of renewable sources for the benefit of our citizens. What we do oppose is the thought of any one entity, be it Green Mountain Power, Grove Solar, Brooklyn Economic Development Corporation, or with all due respect, our own Public Service Board, should have the right to unilaterally determine what our town should look like and what the future of our residential development should be. In that regard, I am absolutely sure that an overwhelming majority of our townspeople do not want industrial solar along every highway and highway near and adjacent to their neighbors. Indeed, adhering to reasonable standards developed by our communities part of the planning process has been the hallmark of both local control and planning policy which has made Vermont the pride of all citizens and the envy of an entire country. For sure, there is a place for industrial solar. As sure as I am of that statement, I am equally sure that it certainly is not the right of the industry to determine where and how that happens. With a clear, specific set of solar facility siting standards, which are legitimately adopted part of our town plan, we are certain that we have met the parameters of the QG analysis in developing clear guidelines duly adopted by a legitimate vote of the only body elected by our citizens to do so. After all, this due deliberative process, even including a site visit by the entire PSB themselves, the town of Brooklyn's legitimate concerns were virtually ignored by an insulting decision by appointed officials. The PSB against the will, which is of an entire community represented by elected officials selected for. Thank you very much. Senator, this is not a question. Thank you very much.
Next is Suzanne Sawyer, followed by Brock Gibian and Greg Pfizer.
My name is Suzanne Sawyer, and I'm from New Haven, Vermont. And a few years ago, my husband and I retired from dairy farming. And we're top key since has passed, as you said. And we are trying to keep our family farm as a farm and keep it in the family. And we've, our farm has found that the solar project would be a great idea to keep our farm in. And we would, we are working with a company right now that is studying the project well. And they're trying to work with other people along with us. The public standpoint, the project is naturally screened on three sides and does not affect the wetlands and helps reduce the need for fossil fuel. We, on the personal side, it allows our farm, which has been in the family for over a hundred years, to stay in the farm with me and my children. And we also have a three-phase power line that goes right to my property. And I encourage you to consider this project best as a group for solar in Vermont. Thank you.
Next is Brock Gibian, followed by Greg Pfizer, and then Don Cummings.
Thank you for having me. My name is Brock Gibian, and I saw a little void over there, but other than that, I'm relying on the second youngest person in the room today. I am a twenty-year-old junior at the University of Vermont pursuing a dual degree in mathematics and economics. I love Vermont because of its sense of community and buying local products, its love for the outdoors, and its focus on sustainability. These three reasons were the most important to me and many others like me. Climate change is a fact, and it's already occurring from the massive storms such as Sandy and Irene to the huge pollution problems we face in other parts of the country and the world. The younger generation of which I am a part of and the generation after us will be inheriting a truly beautiful world. But a world that is being destroyed by our current lifestyles in which we use, 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 but refuse, refuse, refuse to do our part to harness locally generated energy. I believe the majority to be friendly of solar energy, but by creating additional siting standards, we are effectively limiting an opportunity that has created growth through jobs and investment, created more energy independence and reliability in our grid, and is doing our part for climate change. This is an opportunity to pioneer our new sustainable economic industry that will bring real jobs and opportunities to attract and retain our great workforce. Many graduates are finding it harder than ever to find a job after college, especially in Vermont, and many studying my field will find it even harder if legislation surrounding solar siting creates even more barriers to growth. When I drive by larger solar arrays, I see a tool that can bring awareness and education to Vermonters about where their energy actually comes from and the environmental and economic impacts of said energy. A Chinese poet once said, "If you are thinking a year ahead, sow a seed. If you are thinking ten years ahead, plant a tree. If you are thinking one hundred years ahead, educate the people." We need to encourage solar adoption and the education of the impacts of energy to look to the future of our people, our state, our country, and our world. We need to realize the true potential we have to be a force for positive change in our local environment and act. Thank you.
Next is Greg Pfizer, followed by Don Cummings.
I shouldn't be speaking. I'm not sure why I'm on the list.
Okay, I'm sorry. Next is Don Cummings, followed by Marcy Wizniewski, and then Paul Stone.
Good evening. I'm Don Cummings. I'm from South Burlington. I'm a member of the South Burlington Energy Committee, but I am speaking for myself tonight. We've had a discussion about sustainability. In my view, the biggest issue in sustaining life as we know it is how we slow the progress of climate change. The fact that Vermont's current electricity portfolio produces very little CO2 is a point of pride for most of us. Those sources of power do have their own impacts, however. A major portion of GMP's power comes from hydroelectric, which has been developed at the expense of hundreds of thousands of acres of northern Quebec, impacting the land that the native peoples wanted to protect. Another part of our energy supply comes from Seabrook Nuclear Power Plant, a power plant that has sited near hundreds of thousands of people. Our peak energy requirements are met through other energy producers on the New England grid, facilities impacting the lot with the many people living near them, and those that are far away where the fossil fuels that power them are produced through strip mines, mountain top removal, through drilling for gas and oil that produces huge amount of waste byproducts and the contaminants that surround the water supplies. Some will argue we don't need to do anything because our power is still carbon. However, if Vermont can save energy through conservation and efficiency, and if we can generate some of our own local renewable energy, some of that low CO2 power can be sent elsewhere, that'll others reduce their power contribution. Solar rooftops under the right conditions can be an excellent generator of electricity and should be promoted, but there are many considerations to establish. The roof must be oriented properly, unshaded for most of the day, it must be new or newly new, and so as to last as long as the array. They are important but are limited in their impact. The best option for example is land-based solar. It is time for Vermont to take responsibility for its energy we use, except that solar has far fewer impacts than the energy sources we currently burn. Thank you.
Next is Marcy Wizniewski, followed by Paul Stone, and then Corey Decker.
Good evening. My name is Marcy Wizniewski, and I am in opposition to the installation of twenty-five all-stump sun trackers by a third-party developer in a field owned by Basin Harbor Club that orders our property on Mile Point Road in Ferrisburg. Mile Point is a beautiful scenic historic shoreline community, many properties having been passed down through generations from the eighteen hundreds. By the time our group was notified of the application for the solar installation, it was on the fast track. We believe the developer was working to get this completed in order to get a 2014 tax rate. Basin Harbor has over seven hundred acres. We suggested they find an alternative spot for the project but were told this was the most desirable location as it was not visible to their guests, keeping the entrance for Basin Harbor pristine and attractive. We expressed concerns with the proximity of the panels to their compost area, which draws a large seagull population. We worried about the glare from the trackers as a safety issue to their airfield. These concerns were dismissed in a process that was hurried and clearly favored the applicant. A letter was sent to the PSB informing them that this installation was near several historic sites. A halt was requested asserting the applicant had falsely answered this question on the application. The inquiry was launched five weeks after receiving this letter. By then, the installation was complete. The hurry of nature of this project and the disregard for the negative impact on our properties is troubling. Maverick and the developer and Basin Harbor Club will benefit. While Mile Point property values are adversely impacted, westerly views obscured, and a once pastoral view a sea of metal. We live in Vermont. We work hard to pay our exorbitant taxes and maintain our property. We are business owners ourselves and wonder at what point did the Good Neighbor Policy in Vermont make an exception for out-of-state developers to take advantage of inadequate policy and run over local Vermonters?
Next is Paul Stone, followed by Corey Decker and Charles Kelly.
My name is Paul Stone. I'm a farmer in the town of Orwell in Addison County. I served on the Orwell Planning Commission for eighteen years and on the Select Board for twelve years. I was Commissioner of Agriculture in nineteen eighty-five, nineteen eighty-six, when we oversaw and oversaw the department's responsibilities for protecting agri-land in Act 250 process. Vermont has spent many millions of dollars on planning at the town, regional, and the state level. Vermont has benefited from hundreds of thousands of hours of volunteer people hours striving toward good planning. Vermont has concerned their approach on forest lands by acquiring development rights and buying land and deed simple. Now comes the Public Service Board with unchecked power to place solar installations anywhere at their pleasure without regard to any input from any planning or regard to productive agricultural soil. Plain and simple, solar installations are development, and they are ugly. They are being built right in our face, on the edge of roads, close to neighbors, in the view path, and most egregiously on productive agricultural soils. And Vermont could do better than this. Underpose of the town and regional I propose that the town and regional planning efforts be respected and that they should have the sole determination of where solar installations are placed. And Public Service Board should not have any jurisdiction for siting even the large installations. I propose that the legislature take away from Public Service Board all responsibility for solar installations. That way, we can discuss with our neighbors siting issues such as we do now for other developments. And if solar makes sense for a community, that can be permitted. And maybe this will slow down the development of solar systems, and that could be a good thing. I am not at all convinced that our answer to getting off fossil fuels by 2050 can be rooted in the massive development of solar energy.
Next is Corey Decker, followed by Charles Kelly and Erin Hiredall.
Thank you to everybody here tonight at the committee and everybody who drove from great distances. My name is Corey Decker. I live in Fletcher, and I am a super homeowner. Solar has helped me create an economically sustainable future for myself in Vermont. After I moved to my home maybe three years ago, I explored solar as a way of creating predictable energy costs for myself now and significant savings in the future. Solar is a way for me to make an investment in my home and save money and also rules it right by the environment, as I believe we are all stewards of the environment, a win-win-win. So when I got my first bill, and it had a creative number and a huge do not pay in bold letters, I burst into tears and I did I had against in my kitchen. It was an amazing feeling. Solar was working for me. I want others to be able to experience the same joy that I felt when I went solar. I'm fortunate to be in a great spot that allows for solar, but I know that many Vermonters are not in a similar position for whatever reason, whether they be in the trees, live in historic homes, or just aren't situated appropriately. These larger arrays serve a greater community of Vermonters that otherwise wouldn't be able to access clean solar energy. I want others to have the same satisfaction that I felt and to have the same opportunity to give back to Vermont. Community solar arrays support Vermont and Vermonters. Change is real and change is happening. This is an opportunity for Vermonters to join it. We can invest in our energy future today, reap the rewards for years to come, and when we've developed an even more innovative solution, these arrays are easily plucked from the ground and our treasured meadows return to their current state. A community solar array is a placeholder for Vermont's next clean energy chapter. An array protects our lands from harmful development while providing a necessary resource that supports our energy future. The spirit of stasis and independence and Yankee ingenuity is spurred by the opportunity for Vermont landowners to use their land for community solar arrays, this new working landscape for Vermont. I will leave the rest of my comments here, but I am thank you for your interest.
Next is Charles Cummings, followed by Erin Hiredall, and then Leonard Duffy.
Good evening. My name is Charles Kelly. I'm from the town of Addison and a member of the Planning Commission, but I'm speaking tonight for myself. I want to thank the committee for the opportunity to speak, particularly Representative Van Rick for his notice in front porch form about this meeting. As an individual, I've spent thirty-four years of my career in the energy field. I am a registered professional engineer in the state of Vermont. I tell you this so you know that I take energy seriously and its production. My concerns are, I see little information of detailed solar plan or periodic progress reports that give me confidence that the siting of solar arrays, as they are now being proliferated, are actually going to replace the loss of central generated power. I do not see an in-depth economic analysis that shows that this decentralization approach is both doable and with regard to the pronounced RE goals and affordable for the average Vermont. Siting solar arrays are being done without regard to the planning goals of municipalities. The Public Service Board is approving projects without properly considering the impact on our property values, aesthetics, non-solar economic development, with no site business. The Public Service Board is usurping our rights to procedural due process as stated in the U.S. Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments. Developers are leapfrogging along three-phase arteries at will. Lastly, the intermittence of solar energy production, the intermittence of solar energy production coupled with the production limits that utilities can absorb during peak times will make electric storage necessary in a ninety-five percent RE environment. I do not see anything in the legislature for RE plans for addressing siting of electric storage units now or in the future.
Next is Erin Hiredall, followed by Leonard Duffy and Norine Heskey.
Hi. My name is Erin Hiredall. I'm a homeowner here in Vermont, in October. And I am in the energy industry. I work for SunCom, and I'm proud to say that. Every day I go out and help folks do their own individual part to change the energy landscape of Vermont for the better. I have a statement from a woman who unfortunately had to leave, so I'll just read it for you. Hello. My name is Molly Magnum of Fairfield. Our family dairy farm has been farming since nineteen twenty-four. In that time, we've survived major fluctuations in milk prices by being scrupulous with our budget. The enormous swing in milk prices in the past twelve months has made us look at every line item in our budget very critically. Anytime we can lock in an item in our budget, anytime we can lock in a permanent price for any line item is seriously considerable. This attention to these items is necessary to continue a viable business. While building and maintaining our own array of solar panels is not realistic for our farm, hosting an array gives us the opportunity to provide our budget with a fixed electrical rate and offer our neighbors the same advantage. Sometimes, community solar arrays are a perfect fit for our industry. The land chosen for the community solar array is not desirable or productive for our back. One parcel was nested on a ski hill that was below line of light car lines, making the use of tractors and hanging equipment difficult and dangerous. We think very seriously our role of being good stewards of the land were realistic in seeing the connection between global climate destabilization and the burning of fossil fuels. If we have the ability and the opportunity to create an alternative energy source that will positively impact our bottom line and the community in which we live, it's the responsible thing to do. Solar power is a benefit to Vermont, and the programs are working. Let's keep Vermont moving forward with community solar projects.
Next is Leonard Duffy, followed by Norine Heskey, and then Ernest May.
Hi. I'm Leonard Duffy from Heinsberg. I thank you for the opportunity to sit in this important mission. As you know, Vermonters have worked very hard for generations to maintain the integrity of our working rural landscape. We have eliminated billboards, cleaned up roadside trash, screened our junkyards, and enacted strict state and local aesthetic controls. So having worked within the spirit of these roles for more than forty years as an architect, land planner, and a member of local and regional planning commissions, I was totally dismayed to recently drive by another large-scale industrial power plant suddenly sprung up at one of the most pristine dew sheds along our incredibly beautiful interstate highway. In a mere couple of years, these developments have already had a greater negative impact on the appearance of our state than all of the normal development of the past generation, apparently all for the primary benefit of out-of-state investors. And it's far from over. Not only are more and more of these industrial complexes appearing on our bureaucratic landscape, but as they begin to age, the popple will sprout up, the corrosion will take over, the trackers will gradually stop tracking. Front-end loaded subsidies in an industry of rapidly changing technology provide little incentive to maintain or eventually decommission such diminishing investments. Sunshine is not Vermont's most abundant natural resource. Just as we buy oranges, cars, solar panels from places that can produce them more efficiently, we can also purchase a marginal amount of power these projects produce. We should utilize our limited sunshine to enhance our tourists in agricultural industries, not to degrade them. Although I do believe there are appropriate places for solar power plants, please, 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 at least restore local and Act Two Fifty controls over these industrial solar developments immediately. We have already irredeemably lost too much of our incredible world-renowned earnings. Thank you. I submitted a longer version.
I was just wondering, my question, procedural question, that was the second time that somebody from the industry had read a letter from somebody that wasn't here. I was just wondering if that was its problem.
We don't have rules cut quite that fine. Someone wants to speak for someone else, because it was to speak to itself.
Next, we have Norine Heskey, followed by Ernest May, and then Diane Garrett.
Hi. I'm Norine Heskey. I live in Newark. I want to thank the committee for holding tonight's hearing on siting. I understand close to a dozen siting bills have been introduced this session, which means Vermont legislators are aware there's a siting problem. I'm grateful to those of you who will follow through and address this problem. I'm disappointed that H forty, a bill designed to address renewable energy issues in Vermont, managed to get through the House without addressing siting. I believe any renewable energy bill that doesn't address siting concerns does Vermont to disservice. I need to tell you I'm not a climate change denier. I'm an environmentalist. My home is powered by solar, and I believe we do have a responsibility to deal with climate change, but we need to do it in smart, honest, effective, and fair ways, ways that don't just bring large profits to investors, developers, and multinational corporations while damaging Vermont, Vermonters, and our communities. When my town was targeted by a renewable energy developer, Governor Shumlin went on record and said towns should be able to vote, but surely you must know that our votes are meaningless, and when we say no, our votes are routinely ignored by developers in the PSV. Under the current process, town plans are meaningless. Under the current process, regional plans are meaningless. Under the current process, we have exempted an entire class of development from local and regional plans. Merchant developers propose projects which are ushered through the PSV. The PSV ignores the towns and neighbors because they believe you, the legislature, want them to rubber stamp the projects. It's a permitting process, right? So the needs of individuals, communities, and regions are ignored. How can the process be improved? Towns have a right to influence the ways in which they're developed. That's not happening now. Pass legislation so that when towns and communities use legal tools available to them, the town and regional plans, then those documents are dispositive. The failure of Vermont's siting practices to take the wishes of towns into consideration is causing a backlash. You, I have more to say, and I will submit it in writing.
Next is Ernest May, followed by Diane Garrett and Robert Kishko.
Thank you. And hello, my name is Ernest May. I live in South Burlington, a residential neighborhood. There is several homes with solar panels, one with solar hot water, and I can say with confidence that it's solar. The look for practicality and long-term necessity of it all is incredibly appealing not just to myself, but my wife and neighbors as well. In fact, a pair of us are currently in discussion of how the neighborhood could come together and bring more solar to our corner of South Burlington. The issue today is over the aesthetics of solar, what would it mean for landscapes that define states? From what I've experienced, solar can be very appealing on a home and doesn't necessarily have to be front and center. Even if it is, the low-profile nature of the residential panels does not distract from the overall appeal of the home or surrounding property. In fact, with the current generation looking to buy homes for the first time, solar panels would add value to a property for both the seller and purchaser. Folks in my generation are forward-thinking. They strike more sustainable ways of living. While searching for a home to buy, my wife and I, if my wife and I had seen a home with solar already installed, that would have been the one for us. Instead, we are actively looking at ways to add solar to the home we did buy with our neighbors as inspiration. When it comes to solar farms and the market they would leave on the landscape, I would rather see solar arrays in the green mountains than read about oil and gas pipelines cutting through the middle of our country. I would rather see solar provides sustainable energy for our states than read about another mountaintop being severed for coal. I would rather see solar in fields off B nine than continue the endless energy wars in the Middle East. The sun has four billion years worth of energy. Why would we not want to harness that? And why would we approve of legislation that prevents us from moving towards energy in the past? Thank you.
Next is Diane Garrett, followed by Robert Kishko and Diane Nirmek. I'm happy to give my two minutes to the next person. Then next is Robert Kishko, followed by Diane Nirmek and Steve Carrion.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. I had the pleasure several years ago to address the Senate Committee on Natural Resources and Energy. At that time, I spoke on biomass for electricity and the fact that I challenged that committee, and I challenged this committee, and I challenged the Senate and the House to consider siting as a major issue in the state of Vermont. That was very apparent to myself as I took a nice ride up from Springfield this afternoon and happened to see four, three large industrial-scale developments. And I can remember a governor telling us not that many years ago that we shouldn't consider clustering development on the interstate. And we got into a discussion in the car, where are we coming from from this? I think it was maybe Governor Dean that tried to say we don't want to develop along the interstate because of the natural beauty of our state. I also want to point out that I urge the state to encourage solar developers, but to encourage them to do more. There was somebody who testified earlier. We should be looking at rooftops, box stores, municipal state buildings for solar energy. Those are ideal sightings in most cases where we can develop solar energy responsibly. I've got a number of other things that I want to talk about, but I think to the point being that I think it's very important for the state to cite large industrial solar projects. And I put in my notes here that we should look at landfills and quarries as a possible alternative to sit these and not impact as many homeowners, as I've heard tonight, being impacted by large solar. And I'll relinquish the last few minutes of my time to the next person. Thank you. And I will email my notes.
Next is Diane Nirmek, followed by Steve Carrion and Larry Whitford.
Thank you. My name is Diane Nirmek. I'm from Starksville, Vermont. I agree with a lot of people here in this room. I'd like to see solar on houses. I'd like to see them, you know, on rooftops or wherever they can be in places that doesn't become industrial. I see that Vermont Public Research Group today is in full force to support renewable energy and to fight against global warming. The rest of us here are pleading for some semblance of democracy and to weigh in whether we even need renewables or whether we want to trade our environment for them, and if so, help decide where they should be sited. The Vermont Public Research Group has informed and inspired in the past to protect and advocate for the rights of Vermonters, but for the last few years, they have acted like energy lobbyists, pretty much pushing through their agenda on global warming, and have made some of us look as though we have been dragging our heels in the fight for global warming and construction for more renewables. Believe me, I have not been dragging my heels. I have been fighting to keep our mountains, our hills, and prime agricultural land from being blown up and covered up by runaway projects. This unchecked energy sprawl spreading over Vermont was fueled by the speed program. Now the reset program is before us. The ironic note here is this, the underpinning of these renewables will be backed up by natural gas. In theory, Vermont's renewable goals would be an independent of fossil fuels, natural gas, and the bed- gas and the bad boy, but the resistance to this natural gas is of only lip service only. I appeal to the Agency of Natural Resources and the Vermont Natural Resource Council to continue their work in protecting Vermont with vigilance that includes the input of all Vermonters. I appeal to the Vermont Legislature, the Governor's Office, and the Public Service Board to grant us, the people of Vermont, the towns of Vermont, and I'll be right there, and the Regional Planning Commission's transparency and the democracy to participate in the process of how we want to use these renewable project proposals, and to judge its merits. We, the people, need to be satisfied that we are, in reality, a part of the democratic process.
Next is Steve Carrion, followed by Larry Richburg and Peter Rothschild.
My name's Steve Carrion, originally from Sheffield up to three months ago, now moved to Derby. I am all for solar, I am for wind, but on very small scale. Large-scale, corporation-driven, owned, unacceptable. They come in, they do their own fact-winding, they do their own sound studies, and as I'm understanding, as far as solar goes, they get to do all their studying too, and everything's okay. I was forced out of my home. The wind company keeps saying that they are in compliance, they do their own sound studies. Reportedly, I called them up and told them they were out of compliance, because I had a sound monitor, and caught them out of compliance, told the state they were out of compliance. Three years went on, nothing. If we're going to have a problem with these large projects, and we're not going to hold them accountable, standards have to be tightened up. These companies need to be held accountable. If a town's going to let them in, the town should be held accountable. If a community wants to put a solar array, and there's going to be other homeowners affected, they need to be held accountable. Either compensate, don't do the project, or figure it out before you do it in. Don't create bad wealth, don't destroy your neighbor's homes. It's not their place. I don't care if it's somebody's land, and they want to do what they want with their land. I'm sorry, you have neighbors. You don't like your neighbors? Well then, why don't you move by another resound somewhere else to do what you want, but the neighbor, the neighbors accept it? That is, simply, we're destroying our state, we're destroying our communities, and it's a lot of it with the big corporations, it's all for their money gain. I find it, again, unacceptable. And by the way, after three months of moving away from the wind project, my kids' eyes have cleared up, color has come back to them, we were tortured for three years. Do people like seeing kids tortured? Put more of these projects out.
Next is Larry Richburg, followed by Peter Rothschild and Dan Barlow.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Larry Richburg, I'm the Chair of the Randolph Select Board, and also the Chair of the Randolph Energy Committee. I want to speak on behalf of solar energy, I've been a clean energy proponent for most of my life, built a passive solar home many, many years ago. I believe that the sun, and the energy from the sun, is going to be the energy, not only from the state of Vermont, and in our country, but also the whole planet. We need to move in this direction, and we need to make it happen, and the quicker we do that, the better off we'll all be. I know it's inconvenient, and there's compromises that we all have to make for this, and for a lot of things. We may have to give up some of our convenient lifestyle to start doing the way with the fossil fuels, driving our car everywhere we go, but the sacrifices have to be made if we want this planet to continue.
Next is Peter Rothschild, followed by Dan Barlow and James Pepper.
My name is Peter Rothschild, I'm from New Haven, which is ground zero for solar development. And I address with my material, which I'd left with you, and just make a couple of quick comments. I'm going to be one of the few people, I think maybe the only one, who actually has some concrete suggestions for solar siting, because I thought that you came here for. One would be to adopt a good neighbor policy, which is a freestanding solar array should be sited so that the array creates no greater burden on the neighboring property owners for public infrastructure than it does on the property in which it is sited. We have seen multiple cases of 150 CSA's projects proposed for New Haven which violated that. And despite the comments that siting is done carefully, it has not been the case, there have been lawsuits, and in many cases, the projects finally were abandoned. So we think that's important, keeps social comity in the town. The other is a thought that we have, and I have, which is the creation of a solar park, which we require, changing in the wording of Section 248, Title 30, in which we would like to see a solar park where a site that would co-locate a number of separately-owned 150 to 500 KW solar installations sharing a common infrastructure. Be more cost-effective for developers to cite CSA with a solar park, will provide CSA sites for towns who find it extremely difficult to sit locally, because my vision of a solar park includes the involvement of the town government, the likelihood of the negatives associated with poor siting will be severely diminished. This requires a change in language, you know what it is, and I think it's reasonably easy to do, and I think we would find that it will move the ball forward.
Next is Dan Barlow, followed by James Pepper, and then Scott Woodward.
Thank you very much to the committees, my name is Dan Barlow, I'm the Public Policy Manager of the Vermont Businesses for Social Responsibility. We are a statewide business organization with 715 members, and this year we're celebrating our 25th anniversary, so happy birthday to us. I wanted to start off by saying, BDS, our strongly supports the goal of the 2011 Comprehensive Energy Plan to get Vermont to 90% renewable by 2050. We think this is an achievable goal, but really will mean changing a lot of the ways that we live our life right now. It will change, means changing the way we eat our homes, we bring electricity to our buildings, and how we commute to work. So, we do support the renewable energy goal. Because of that, we do think that energy siting should remain with the Public Service Board, there's a reason for that. First of all, with the Public Service Board, you have a level of consistency that will bridge many government, governments administrations and legislatures, because this is better terms, so that provides some consistency and long-term vision. Also, we think the process we have right now is working pretty well. Projects are changed based on input, and the PSV overview covers things that Act 250 would not. We also believe that quasi-judicial statewide bodies is in a better position to make decisions about statewide electricity needs, and to balance the need for more renewable energy with local concerns, so we do think this is a good venue to make energy decisions by. That said, we do recognize that participating in PSV hearings is often very difficult, or refusing for citizens, and even some of towns, so we do support efforts to bring more citizens into this process, to get them educated, and have the capability for them to interact with the PSV hearings. You know, with good input, good projects can become great projects, so often, you know, community input can make projects better. You know, a lot of BDSR members who are in this field, they do adhere to the good neighbors policy, and they work with the communities and neighbors to craft projects that, you know, do fit the footprint of the, thank you very much.
Next is James Pepper, followed by Scott Woodward, and then Jack McCarthy.
Thanks for the opportunity to be here. My name is James Pepper, I look at Sun Comment, and I deal with permitting around community solar arrays. I think I'd like to take my time to dig a little bit deeper into the siting issues that we face, goes well beyond the Public Service Board's criteria. You know, initially, we look for areas that have at least an acre of open land, they need to avoid rare endangered species, they need to avoid wetlands, streams, rivers, they need to avoid historic sites, they need to be unlanded, it's not under conservation area, they need to have access to face power, they need to have a willing landowner, and you know, if you have the good fortune to find those sites, then we immediately take our case to the town, we send letters to all abutting landowners, we set up meetings at the Planning Commission and the Select Board, we seek their input, we look for screening options that work for folks, and once we've done all that, then we begin our Public Service Board proceedings. It's not, you know, as kind of easy as some people have made it out to be. And I'd also just like to mention about kind of the way that we install our solar projects, it's somewhat minimally invasive, we put our racking systems into the ground, we don't use a concrete footing, you know, when we pull them out of the ground at the end of 25 or 40 years, we fill back in the holes, we don't use any pesticides, we don't use any fertilizer, the soil is the same, is in the original condition as when we found it, it's almost like we were never there.
Okay, I think we will go then to Jack McCarthy, followed by Colleen Haley and Kevin McAllister.
And just, I appreciate people's endurance and patience, we have five former folks who participate, including McCarthy. Thank you very much, as a former superintendent, I appreciate those of you who are here at the late hour, probably not waiting for, I'm in the range for office. My name is Jack McCarthy, I'm a resident of St. Albans and a member of a community solar array. I believe in alternative energy, I believe solar is a way to protect Vermont's energy future, and a way to protect Vermont's landscape. While some may not appreciate the beauty of a solar array, I do, because it's a visual reminder that we're doing the right thing. We are setting an example by taking responsibility for our actions. Solar is a clean way to power our lives and harness the most powerful resource of all, the sun. When I explored putting solar on my own house, I was disappointed to learn that my roof is not fit for a solar array, a rooftop array. There are too many gables. So while many feel that rooftop are the way, or the only place for solar, I'm here as a Vermont homeowner that couldn't host my own array and was relieved when I was able to join a community array. I joined a community solar array because it is, it offers a family like mine the opportunity to access solar energy. There is enough open land in this state for future community solar projects to support our green energy future. A community array allowed me to join with fellow Vermonters in helping our state. It was easy to get involved, the process is working, let's keep that that way.
Next is Colleen Haley, followed by Kevin McAllister and Ben Gordeski.
Thank you. My name is Colleen Haley, and I'm from Morteau. I'm here to share with you some of my experiences as a small business owner in a ski town with a livelihood that depends on tourism and the concept of aesthetics. I've lived in the Mad River Valley for nearly 20 years, and when my husband at the time and I were building our own house, we went solar, we invested. As two young 30-somethings in the valley, the only reason we could afford to do that was because of some of the great state subsidies, so thank you for that. Lovely prices have cooled down since then. We went on to buy a business in Waitsfield, and let me tell you, running a ski shop, we knew that tourists were our livelihood. When solar farms started popping up along Route 100 corridor, it spurred a lot of conversation. I've talked about it with many customers, and I'll tell you, nine times out of 10, they agreed with me that this was a good thing. Skiers get it, they know better than anybody the threats that global warming poses. For me, local renewable energy projects are part of Vermont's natural working landscape, just like farms are. As a side business, I rent out rooms in my house in full-time and full each season. I actually market my rooms as solar living near skiing and hiking, and many of the guests that have chosen to stay with me have said that that's part of the reason they selected my house as opposed to another one. It made them feel good, being able to enjoy the scenic beauty that we have to offer, knowing that they were helping, supporting investments to fight the climate change that threatens it. Maybe it's because I live in Morteau, a town that was underwater during Irene, or maybe it's because I lost the house I grew up in on the Jersey Shore to Superstorm Sandy. Maybe that's why when I look at a solar farm or a wind turbine, I'm actually inspired. I must admit, I do get a little bit irate when I hear people talk, complain about solar farms. We all have a responsibility to bear some of the burden of our energy footprint, because we all use energy, and, thank you.
Next is Kevin McAllister, followed by Ben Gordeski and Lucy Black.
Good evening, I'm Kevin McAllister, I'm the managing partner of Cadmont Solar, which is a small but growing, full-service solar design installation company based in Randolph, Vermont. We currently have 11 full-time employees, and are expecting to add another 4 to 16 within the next month or two. In our design installation role, we team coordinate this particular public good application, as well as the 248 condition process on behalf of our clients. In our view, the system works well because it is reasonably predictable, both in terms of the time it takes, personnel issues, as well as for the current air understanding of the current siting criteria. The current process does allow for local input on client projects larger than 15 KWACs. Allowing towns to arbitrarily define their own siting criteria will add considerable uncertainty to the planning and development of new solar projects. The state's ambitious goal is for deploying considerable additional renewable energy generation capacity over the next 35 years. In the context of the earth's developing climate crisis, this is courageous, sensible policy. Let's be clear, part of what makes this goal achievable is the state's progressive monitoring rules and renewables permitting policies. Let's be smart about the siting renewables, but also understand that changes to the current permitting process that either increase uncertainty or slows down the permitting process will necessarily increase costs of installing these projects. If permitting costs increase, some projects will no longer be economically feasible to be built, and will therefore reverse the impact the ability to meet the state's noble goals. Currently, revenue installers, I believe, and developers do make reasonable efforts to mitigate the visual impact of solar arrays on neighboring property. It's important to remember, however, that these technologies, both solar and wind, cannot be completely hidden away from us. In the case of solar, we need unstructured access to the southern sky, to all the locations that are reasonably proximate to power lines. As most power lines are on roadways, we're going to see these solar arrays. Thank you.
Next is Ben Gordeski, followed by Lucy Black.
Thank you for having me speak. My name is Ben Gordeski from Burlington, Vermont. I have been in the solar business for almost six years now as a solar manager for a small electrical contracting company. However, I am not here to speak to someone who has meaningful employment in the solar industry, although that's true. I have also been an energy activist for 30 years. I was one of the many who made small, meaningful efforts to promote my energy. I am all for conservation and efficiency to reduce our energy consumption, however, even if we reduce our electricity energies by 50%, which we all would agree is a very ambitious call, the reason 50% will need to come from somewhere. If we care about our children here in Vermont, if we care about many people who live in coastal cities in other parts of the world, if we care about the people who live in coal-rich areas, if we care about the fate of the First Nations- areas, if we care about the fate of the First Nations peoples in Quebec, the remaining 50% must be in-state renewable as soon as possible. We need all sorts of in-state renewable energy, big and small. Solar is an important piece of the puzzle. If we stick to only small or community-scale projects, however, we will never get the renewable energy capacity needed to turn around global warming in time. Yes, large-scale solar farms are the result of investment by corporations and people with lots of money. I don't personally agree with an economic system where some people are rich and others are poor. I hope to see that system be changed in my lifetime. However, in the meanwhile, climate change is an urgent matter. I would rather see people with money invest in solar farms than in nuclear or coal plants. Solar farms go through an extensive environmental review process under current state laws. Not only environmental issues, but impacts on the utility grid, aesthetics, and deconditioning are all considered by the Public Service Board. The board is not a pushover when it comes to these large-scale projects. However, solar farms will certainly change Vermont landscape to some degree. Far better to change our landscape to generate our own clean electricity in-state than pushing the environmental impacts of our energy usage onto people, often poor or not white and live elsewhere.
And next is Lucy Black.
Thought it would be my name that lost. So excited to be asked. Hi, I'm Lucy Black from Burlington, and I work for Sun Common, the local company that's helping Vermonters go solar. My job involves working directly with landowners who are interested in hosting community solar arrays on their property, having these amazing conversations with landowners, and I love it. As a longtime Vermonter who loves this beautiful state, been here over 50 years, it's important to me to defend our farm landscape. I consider this an important part of my job as I help Vermonters access solar through hosting arrays on their land. Community solar arrays serve the greater community by allowing a group of residents to access clean energy. They also offer a much larger benefit to Vermont and to the health of the planet as a whole. I hear people say these arrays are changing the landscapes of Vermont. What I see is a powerful new kind of working landscape that provides clean, affordable power and a much-needed solution to climate change. We've heard that over and over tonight. As it stands now, there are many hurdles to getting community solar in place in Vermont. Permitting and citing a solar array is complicated and requires consideration of many factors, including utility restrictions and the protection of wetlands, among many others. I'm working closely with my fellow Vermonters, and I want to make sure we're doing what is best for them and their neighbors. My experience has shown that landowners are very sensitive to the impact of solar on their neighbors, and we're working, that is Sun Common, is working to find appropriate solutions together with those landowners and neighbors. These arrays exist within a community and will change the landscape. Because of that reality, we want to be sure these arrays are a good fit. Not every parcel of land is suitable for a solar grid, and we understand that. Our work with landowners is guided by a good neighbor agreement, which we created specifically to reflect our goals and values. We've talked about good neighbor agreements, and Sun Common has developed a great one. I'll finish up by saying that adding further restrictions on solar citing would be a detriment to the growth of community solar in Vermont. The community arrays not only serve Vermont landowners, but are looking to benefit from this productive new working landscape. Thanks, and thanks for having us.
So I just want to thank everyone on the committee and in the room. I know there was a lot of smart and heartfelt remarks shared on all sides of the issue. I really appreciate the civility and pleasantness of everyone, even though this is not an easy thing for us to talk about, but I think we do our best work in Vermont when we sit down, look each other eye to eye, and move things forward. Thank you again. I also want to remind people, you can submit, and please do, send your testimony by email and it will go into the record on our webpage.